Okay, good morning. It is 8:00 AM. Monday, June 26, 2017. In my call to the Department of County Districts Court to order. Today we have Mike Cummings from Second Baptist Church. We give him the vacation. He will please stand and remain standing until the election.
Let's pray together. Lord, this is the day that you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Or we come to you today proclaiming you as our Creator God. We acknowledge and receive your gift of salvation through your only Son, Jesus Christ, and we seek your guidance with the aid of your Spirit. Lord, you set all things in order, including this governing body. We accept the sacred admonition to help everyone here today to seek justice, love, mercy with clarity and resolve, to practice kindness and show our love for others, to employ charity, discernment, maturity, and wisdom, to serve our fellow citizens with humility and impartiality, to support and encourage the best from ourselves and others. Our community has entrusted us to seek what's best for everyone and promote the common good for all according to your will. Bless the efforts of these men and women in this meeting to complete the task set before them. Forgive us when we fail to seek and follow your plans for ourselves and our fellow men. Make us more like you in all that we do. In your name, and the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual who liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, a flag that leads us to being Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Okay, just a quick note before we get started. I was informed last week, and I'm very happy to relay this to you. The Melvin Drum Chief Deputy of the Year Award is the Texas Chief Deputies Association's highest honor. It was named for Melvin Drum, who was the chief deputy of Alcatraz County. He was killed in the line of duty following on the traffic stop involving domestic distress. Chief Drum is not only an outstanding chief deputy, but also a extremely involved in his community, especially with youth activities. Recipients of this award embody not only the qualities set forth by Chief Drum, but also individuals who have provided exemplary service to the Texas Chief Deputies Association. We are honored today to honor one of our very own, David Johnson, received that award last week. And I want to say thank you. Stand up, Chief. Let everybody take a look at it. Oh, you were standing up. Anyway, congratulations. Thank you for your job. Okay, number one on the agenda is approval of amendments, recognized amendments from the Jim 12, 2017 Department of County Districts Court meeting. Any additions or questions on that?
I have just a couple of things. I think they're just type of service. There's any word, long down, number 10, insurance premium. And then motion, it says fiscal damage rather than physical damage.
Yeah. Yes, fiscal. That's okay. We can correct. I'll correct.
Number 11, the motion says, "I will accept the amended agreement with Attorney General in regards to records paid in county." Should that be in regards to?
You said "on."
That's why I don't remember.
So I've got to be careful what you're gonna say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is that good? Anything else? Okay, those changes are noted. Okay, budget amendments to consider and act upon. Budget amendments for the 2016-2017. Any questions about those?
I do have a couple of questions, Judge. Item one, Carrie, the donations is $11,000 donation. Where did that come from?
I have to refer to Jim Earlman. Do you know where the part of the dollars came from? They get various donations out here. Lots of money would be here today, I guess. We can send that too.
Okay, yeah, $11,000 was fairly significant. So I was just interested to know where that came from.
I do too. I remember.
It probably wasn't a monetary donation. It was probably, oh, it wasn't. It was probably, oh, it wasn't. It wasn't. It was cash.
I've got a question on the constable expenses for the reserve deputy. Kind of guaranteeing that we're gonna keep those people actually spending all this money on education equipment. We haven't, we haven't any way of...
There's no guarantees. I believe they've gone through a pretty thorough screening process, though, to choose those reserves. I feel like the constables are comfortable with who they're choosing.
Well, just like some of them are gonna spend all that money, and then all of a sudden they have to go to another eight.
Which makes the point, Commissioner Busch, bringing up the point, even though they have gone through a principal screening process, it seems like we would have some type of validation law.
Well, you know, if they take it off on us, how about repay it? Something like that. This is an awful lot of money to pay.
No, but it's a question.
I wanted to throw that out there and see what the other members of the court consider and think about.
Well, I think it's fair, from my opinion, it's fairly new, right? And so they're trying to get the reserve program under their belt and really start to evolve in the county. A thousand dollars for education would seem to me, you know, fairly minimal. I would agree. I think there's a $10,000 expenditure. We were flying them, you know, out of state or something along those lines. I think it's something we need to watch. I actually wouldn't be surprised if in their budget this time around, they are asking for something like this to have a line, I know. And I don't want to speak for them, but I wouldn't be surprised.
And they are.
And, okay, so I don't know.
Just because they need a uniform to wear, too.
A uniform.
Or Eagles concert t-shirts didn't work.
But I think that's a good point, Commissioner, and I think it's something we need to watch. It is so very new. What I've heard, at least about the screening, is that they are individuals that want to work here. They're committed, and we're not paying them salary.
Yeah, we want them to issue the pay. I think that just makes a good point.
These kinds of things always work out in this game.
I do have just a couple more things, Judge. Item three, Carrie, the JP number two, or I'm sorry, number four, salary and benefits contingency.
Just check for this one, while we're at it. We need to address some of those to step in the motions.
Okay. And then item five, just $263,000 coming from contingency. Please elaborate.
Well, can you have to explain exactly about this? Which is about to tell you if we purchase them now or just can say, "Oh, I want to..."
Okay. This was something that we had actually put in for budget this year. The plan was kind of to, we have about 45 switches across the county to connect everybody into the network and into Internet. So all of your computers and phones and several printers and things like that. The switches that we're currently using are coming end of life and into support, and so we need to get those moved out and get new ones in place. As I said, the original plan was to do it in thirds, so five, 15 each year, and kind of go along with that. Then we saw that we could actually get a huge discount. We bought all 45 now, especially with all of the equipment that we're buying for the LEC. It's dropping the price of each switch by about $1,500 apiece or more, depending on all the equipment that we buy for the LEC. So if we, also if we buy before the end of June, July, is when Cisco's end of fiscal year comes, and so they're going to be getting more discounts. I don't have that. So Carrie, with the amount at $263,000, I think we only have a half a million with the contingency. How does that, where does that put us fiscally? We need to have several more months in the budget cycle.
We do that, leave this switch to another agency as well. It is a little bit slim, but I think we're good. But there are a few other places that we have to get into.
And this wouldn't qualify to go into the law enforcement project? This isn't as a result of that. This is just countywide? No, these are just, yeah, these are just switches that we use in the downtown buildings and all of the equipment that will go into the LEC will come out of that portion of budget. I'm just surprised with it being end of life. It wasn't, it didn't get more attention in the budget cycle. I guess I'm surprised to see that dollar amount this far into the budget. I just don't recognize that. We're betting that.
Well, the original intention was to develop the next three years.
Right, right. Just replace them in thirds. Right.
It was gonna be 15 each, maybe do it each budget sample. If we got savings through all of it.
The cost to do 15 with support was going to be around $104,000. So we'll get, save some money by doing them all at once with the LEC equipment. And there's no IT line items that could offset this? It all has 100% of it has to cover in contingency? We have to look at our budget.
We may be able to pull some of it from there. Maybe we can go back and look. But I'm pretty sure you're going to get to that.
Right, yeah. Not quite that number.
Have a motion.
Will we approve the budget amendments?
Have a motion and a second on favor, Judge Ryan. Vouchers to consider and act upon approval of the payment of the back process by the county office of the period of June 7, 2017 through June 1, 2017. Check numbers 175, 297 for 175, 812. And wire transfers 916 through 918 in the amount of $4,012,148.48. Have a motion.
I move that we approve of the vouchers that were accounted for checks and wire in the $4 billion, $1,048,48.
Second for discussion. Just have one quick question, Judge. Page six of 27, check number 175358, the amount of $7,000 for carrying the 2016 Chevy Tahoe. I just, clarification, was that an accident?
Sure.
I just confirmed it was the Sandy Hinkle.
Do you ever have injuries?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty, oh, like I said, Carrie, that's been a long back. So who was it paying to?
Accident, auto body and automotive.
Yes, that's gotta be, I can verify.
Please, okay, thank you.
And the other, have a motion, second on favor, Judge Ryan. We're gonna skip down and do the amendment real fast so Judge Ryan can get back to work. This is all my fault. I'll take the full responsibility. I forgot to put this on the due, so we have to add it in. This is a Court of Appeals construction project. You hear before, only managed construction project in the office of the Court of Appeals. And take connection necessary. Judge, would you like to get up and talk about this? Or Mike, you want to?
First of all, I certainly appreciate you taking me out of order.
Sure.
The Court of Appeals is just seeking the permission of the Commissioner's Board to do some renovations in our offices. Originally, you recall, we had planned more extensive changes just beyond our budget control. We're hoping now to refresh the common areas by putting down new flooring. And I can necessitate that we actually make some alterations to the building itself in that we have some credentias that were originally part of our office staff. Because we reduced our staff, we were gonna remove those credentias. And that was gonna be the substantial change to the building. And with those credentias removed, then the plan was to do re flooring. All of it would come out of the budget of the seven Court of Appeals. Mike can turn the hell out here. I think the process was we were asking for permission from the Commissioner's Board to make those alterations. But also contracting, I think you paid for it and you paid it back. I can tell you the legislature had approved our budget.
Yeah, so you're good for it?
So we're good. We're good for it.
And we need to have it finished by noon.
Originally, we wanted to do the big project by the end of the summer. Our budget year ends August 11, so we, you know, we're hoping to finish it by October 1. And we're gonna take it in two stages. First was to remove the credentias and have to necessitate repairing the walls. And then after that, we're gonna come in and do it. So the total project was gonna be in those two stages with the electrical work and the floor and the credence repair running less than $1,000, down to about $7,500. And then the flooring, we were looking, we received an estimate between $35,000 and $40,000. All expenses that were seven will reimburse the county for. It's a good improvement.
Did you say $35,000 for the floor?
Yeah. Originally, we had a smaller area in the kitchen area. And for uniformity, we discussed going to marry the courtroom entirely around the courtroom and the hallway. So the hallways would all be in the, laminate would look flooring. Just for uniformity.
So what is that a total of?
A total of about, what did you say? Maximum was of about $60,000. And we're working at $40,000 on the flooring and about $7,500 on the concrete. If there'd be contingencies or things that change that, I don't think there would be material alterations to the building itself.
Let me throw something out there. If you've got any, have you seen proposals? Question would be the proposal that David Moore, I believe, gave to the Department of Electrical, for more electric. Wonder if that's at their rate or our rate? That's something we need to look at. If they come through us, it's actually a cheaper rate. So that's something we need to look at. So you've got the electrical, more electric would be doing it. I'll have to bring in, probably tell them they'll be, once we get the credentias out, see what we're gonna do with the wall. That may be another cost that's not covered here right now. And it'd be a very minor cost. Our crews will go through and tear out the credentias and get everything ready and have them come in and do all the flooring.
Can the credentias be moved to some other office?
These are, these are built in. The building was built in. The perco used to sit out in front of the judge's offices years ago.
They're, I guess, not needed.
We've reduced our staff. So this storage area is no longer necessary. And it's in the public area. And I think what you're talking about, it'd be pretty worthless. You wouldn't be able to...
We wouldn't be able to save.
Okay. And then assuming the proposal will go to Vicki, follow our purchasing process and the protocol with that dollar amount? I just want to make sure.
What really needs to happen is me and Vicki need to work with these contractors and make one point and make sure we get the best price.
Do you have any problem with the change being made to this?
Okay. Do you have a need of motion? What are we approving? We're approving the...
The change.
The changes that we're gonna make, because it's our building. So that's why we have to, we have to allow them to do this.
That's, that's what I'm, we're just asking permission to all of the building and the...
Do I put it in dollars?
We pay, they pay us back. I make a motion to approve the amended construction project in the office of the Court of Appeals and to follow the appropriate purchasing protocol.
Okay, have a motion, second on favor, Judge Ryan.
Judge Tanner, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna skip around. Number eight, strategic planning services to provide update and overhaul of the county and then all regional planning services, but strategic planning services. And I'm here in the PRPC, good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
I haven't said it, but it's gonna be the...
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very humbled and very appreciative of the opportunity and working with you guys in that capacity. As many of you know, a couple of months ago, you entered into a local agreement with this assistant strategic planning, Commissioner Vaughn and Commissioner Merdia got that moving, and we've had a really good time moving on that so far. As we got to looking at the issues facing the county, you guys do a lot of stuff in a lot of areas. So we spent about the first month developing background information as to where you're at on several different areas. Broadly, those areas that we had determined would be the overarching areas to look at are facilities, law enforcement, fire protection, road and transportation, legal and judicial, general staffing, communications, and fiscal and budgeting. Under each of those areas, we've actually identified about 10 different subtopics that we'll want to look at. What we did is establish a small working group. I don't know how Judge Tanner selected these people, whether it was short straw or long straw. And we ended up with Commissioner Merdia, Commissioner Vaughn, Carrie Hood, and Scott Rumley, Mike Head, Julie Smith, and Randall Sims. So like I say, I think they all lined up waiting to be a part of this, and I really appreciate their willingness.
I can honestly tell you it's so much.
In my mind, I'm gonna think they're all...
Okay, okay, as long as you think that, that's all.
Thanks, Judge.
I believe in one of those things I'm concerned about. I'm not gonna mention it. I cannot believe, I cannot believe anyone else that sort of didn't want to feel left out. Who would be calling one of the other department heads at a time when this is too, the property that's part of the discussion? So I would be a little formative.
Whenever you see that 372 number come up, just, I don't know it's us. But what we're doing is we're having a series of small committee groups where we're looking at these topics and essentially defining what we mean whenever we say facilities. Depending on whether you're in purchasing, or if you're high, or if you're Commissioner Merdia, you view facilities differently. So we're trying to define what we mean when we say facilities. Once we have those definitions put together, we'll come together as a larger body and have the full strategic planning session. But it didn't seem to be wise to pull everybody together and go into strategic planning until we had identified what we meant when we said certain terms, as well as what are the challenges in these different areas. So we had our first meeting last month. We got through, was it about 12 items, I think? Got through about 12 of roughly 50 different items, defining those, establishing what the challenges are we're facing in those areas are. We actually have a poll out right now. Looks like we're gonna be getting together again in a couple of weeks with this small planning group and go through and try to knock off another 10 or 15 of these items by defining them and establishing the challenges. Once we have that document put together with all of the issues we're looking at and defined and with the challenges identified, that will go out to all the strategic planning members. Everybody will have the opportunity to prepare for about a month and then come back together and we'll have probably two, maybe three strategic planning sessions where we prioritize these items and we start knocking off and developing strategies for those top-ranked items. The meeting we had, the other day was very, very productive. I felt very good about the direction it was going. And it became very clear very quickly. Whenever you say certain terms, it depends on which side of the beach ball you're looking at, which color is facing. So we're getting that lined up, and I think we can all end up on the same page, and this can be a good positive year-long process. Y'all have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Other than operationally, we need, we will commit to the court to kind of just putting this quick agenda item on so that everybody can stay afloat with the information. So other than that.
Yes, ma'am. And Dustin Meyer with PRPC is here with me also. He's been involved in this from day one. And as I transitioned into some other responsibilities, Dustin's gonna be taking over my current responsibilities as Local Government Services Director of PRPC. And this will end up being his primary project. It's one that I'm gonna keep a hand on because I think it's a really interesting project.
Thanks, Cam.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Looking for insurance report, to review that, insurance report.
Good morning, Kate.
Good morning. There's nothing unusual on the insurance report this morning. So please, honest. Have refined time clock to hear a report on time clock plus and make any actions necessary. Well, good morning. We are currently at stage eight, which is the final stage. We're working on the sheriff's office for implementation now. All the SO job codes have been entered into time clock plus. And we're currently working on the accrual rules, which is part of that backend process for time clock plus in order to make sure that everything accrues and applies correctly. And the system does those processes automatically. We're also working on master reports. That's gonna be a special concern. And Veronica in my office has been working on that as we go along. We've also been cleaning up and purging the employees in the sheriff's office because we, of course, uploaded back at the beginning of this process. So we're purging the employees that are no longer there and loading the employees that have changed. We have, Veronica has a meeting with Killy at the SO on July 12 to have a walkthrough on those job codes and to make sure that everything is correct and we're not missing anything on the job codes. They will, at that time, take a good look at the system overall and address any concerns that Killy has that we may not have seen at this point. Then there is another meeting scheduled. We anticipate first week of August to test those issues that arise during this first meeting to make sure that everything is flowing smoothly. At the end of that August meeting, our hope is that we can move forward then in scheduling the goal updates and to work through those processes. The goal is to have the sheriff's office on before the end of the fiscal year, or by the end of the fiscal year. Also, just so that you're aware, we are currently operating on version six of time clock plus. And there will be a budget item on my budget to upgrade to version seven because version six is no longer being supported. That support is gone away. We've extended through the end of the fiscal year. But we will need to upgrade to version seven with our upcoming new budget year in order to maintain support. Any questions?
After the potential September vote at the SO, what is left after that?
Well, those are all of the departments that have agreed to come on. The only thing that will be left after that are the courts. And the DEA will not be on at that point. For a total of 51 employees is the, approximately 51 employees are not on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
You're welcome.
Number six, ARPS program to consider and act upon. Two special, the ARPS program offers TAC, HDBG for HCA tracking and reporting to offer us on a gesture sign, animal appropriate in contact with the actions.
TAC has offered us to do the ARPS program to create the 1095C forms and do all of that record keeping and file with the IRS, just as they did last year, at no charge countywide. However, because CSCD is not a part of our administrative services only group, there will be the same $4.25 per form fee charged for CSCD after the process is finished and they count the number of total 1095s that they prepare for CSCD. I've talked with Terry Easterling, and he is in full agreement to approach the 1095s the same way this year and to reimburse the county the cost of those forms. Last year, the cost for CSCD was $295.65. And CSCD reimbursed that cost through the insurance by your court.
Kate, how was it since last year was the first year? Was, did we enter into this particular agreement?
Yes, for CSCD, and everything went smoothly. They already have all of the information at TAC. We already have the processes. We already have the processes. We have the files. And they asked at the end of the year last year that we, everyone who was currently participating to continue to upload the information on every payroll basis. And so they already have what's in, has been processed in payroll thus far. If we choose not to participate, that information will just be dumped. But we are up to speed and ready to just process through the rest of the year seamlessly for the ten ninety-fives.
I move that we have continued participation in the ARTS program of this TAC, which you sent.
I have a motion and a second on the favor raise your hand.
Thank you.
Number seven, treasurer's report.
Okay, briefly, this morning at Emerald National Bank, our general fund is eighteen million, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents and we're currently earning one point one four as our interest. And that's last week's rate. I haven't received this morning. We get it every Monday and I'm sure that should be in the general area. Texas class is earning one point one five and we have eight million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and two cents. And Tex Pool, it's earning seventy-six basis points and we have four hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. And in Tex Pool Prime, it's earning one point oh six and we have five million, sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. So our total cash general is thirty-two million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. We have, I mean, rates have been steadily going up. We're kind of in a lull right now. I mean, they've dropped maybe a basis point or two, but every day it changes. So it'll be higher tomorrow, but we still have good rates.
I do have a quick question. Was we did the policy, the annual policy, a couple of courts ago? There was a new addition to diversify, if I remember correctly?
No additions. We didn't change the policy at this time. Speaking of that, though, this last conference, they did pass a couple of bills. So I do need to change some wording in the policy and we'll bring it up before you guys begin.
Okay, I thought there was an additional, either agent or.
Oh, it was a broker, yes. And that was the only change was to add another broker to our brokers list.
So we haven't tapped into that broker?
No. And I'll bring it before you guys, before we do that.
Thank you.
Number nine, donation acceptance to consider and approve upon filing of the school district. One unit of Safari Land Second Chance Body Armor for use cover on number two. I don't have any backup in my packet. Do you know anything about that? Is there any back?
I just got a call.
Did you just get?
Steve Ryanwell asking.
There's no documentation or anything, okay. Does he need body armor in his court? I'm just curious. I mean, I don't care if he has it. I'm just, it's a donation. It's free, but does he really use it?
I don't.
Okay, okay.
Did you get any notification?
I got, I got a call from saying that he was looking at getting it. That was the only notification I got. I move we could have the body armor that they have in the parking for the school district for County Court of Law number two.
I have a motion and a second on the favor raise your hand. Thank you very much. Number ten, sheriff's cell to consider an act upon changing the location of the sheriff's cell from the auditorium in the Central Building to courthouse steps for July fourth sale only. Make any action necessary. Someone came to me asking what we were gonna do. They, it's a holiday, the room is closed. Can they do it on the courthouse on, on the courthouse steps? And they used to do it on courthouse steps for a gazillion years back when I was a kid. And so I said, yeah, so we had to put it on here to get that approved from the court. So it's not gonna be that big of a deal. It's gonna be some people sitting on courthouse steps. Someone's coming. Right. Chief. It's just this one time and we're gonna be back to the Senate building. It's just a weird circumstance where the first Tuesday of the month is in the fall. I make a motion to approve change to the location of the sheriff's cell from the auditorium from the auditorium of the Senate building to the courthouse steps on the July fourth, twenty seventeen. I have a motion. Second on favor raise your hand. Number three, district attorney interlocal agreement, city of Dallas and forty-seven, county of Dallas. Consider not from interlocal agreement between the city of Dallas and forty-seven, county of Dallas. Regarding internet crimes, Randall.
Since it started with Rebecca King's, as VA and Ralph Fletcher was doing, it's Internet Crimes Against Children grant. It's an Department of Justice grant. And we don't have the grant. City of Dallas has the grant. The city, Dallas Police Department is the hub. What ICAT does, they've got a, they've got a national organization set up. But then throughout the United States, they have what they call a hub. We're one of the spark. It's off of the Dallas hub. Does that make sense?
Yep.
It's been that way for.
We've been doing this for a long time.
For a long time, very long time. And we continue to do it and so a lot of crimes get reported to them about the internet crimes against children and then they'll let the local agency know and local, the hub know, hub then will let the local agency know that something's happening. And we've had that happen. Well, I can't tell you how many times. Not a lot, but enough that it's worth being in it. And so they kick a little, little funds to us. Everyone's willing to pay for the internet line and that kind of stuff that's dedicated to that deal. It's totally separate, independent from the DSA.
So how long has this agreement been in place?
I've been in office for thirteen years and Rebecca was doing it, so.
So this is a renewed.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
We don't have any backup, so that's where my question.
Yeah.
I've just got it.
Well, and first thing, there's maybe five original copies. So just go to the last page of each one of them and sign it, yeah. So go after we go fill out the leads. Anyway, it's probably sixteen, seventeen years.
How often do we renew it?
Well.
Every time?
Yeah, we've. Here's what's happened. They kind of dropped the ball and sending out the interlocal agreements and it just kept kind of riding from previous one. And I raised the issue with Veronica, my office administrator. I said, you don't have anything from Dallas enough that I kept thinking of. So she contacted them and they went, oops. So anyway, so that's why we got it. It's actually, this one's for twenty sixteen and seventeen time period. So we should be getting another one here before our, our problems look out. Right.
Yeah, this agreement ends June thirtieth of seventeen.
That's what I'm saying. We should be getting one.
It's good for Friday.
Right.
We're glad you brought it.
We're covering ourselves for this one. Because remember that, it's what Veronica says, the way it is when, oops.
Okay, so what's the shame is that we have to have this, that there are internet crimes against children.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, I need a motion. Just before we.
I move we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Dallas and forty-seven, county of Dallas.
I have a motion and a second on the favor raise your hand. I'm just, when will this come back for next year?
Probably a lot quicker than this one.
I have a copy of the agreement too. I'd like to review it. I've never seen it, so. I don't need this one. It's time to a motion, but when it comes around.
I'll get Veronica to scan. Once I get that back, I'll get Veronica to scan it and send it to you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm only comfortable since we've done it for so long because typically I would have stayed.
Now, it basically will pay for, like, one of the risk getters is doing overtime on business. I've got specific risk getter signed to do that. So if he winds up going with the PD or sheriff's office or someone like that helping, but he'd be the person who gets the call notified folks. So they'll pay for that. I for the internet one. That's about it. I think that's all there is to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number twelve, elections to consider and accept the donation of a desk from Catholic attorneys of the case's campaign. Melinda, you actually have a picture of the donation.
I do, and it cleaned up really nice.
Yeah.
So I'm just asking to be able to keep it.
Where did you go?
What if we say not?
Is that already in your office?
Well, it's in one in the outside offices. It's gonna be for Bobby and Diane.
All right. Do you want to add to that?
No, it's beautiful. Okay.
Any motion?
I have a motion to approve the acceptance of the petition.
I have a motion and a second on the favor. Raise your hand. Obviously.
Thank you very much.
Number thirteen, courthouse to consider and act upon a course of action for completion of unfinished court spending billwork.
This is an item that we've been presenting to y'all since twenty twelve. County courthouse, the restoration work, we had one of the warranty claims was on the millwork. A company referenced that, Rest Your House owned by Richard Openhouse. That's his company. We went through the project. We filed warranty claims. And within, God forbid, last year, so we finally, we've been notified they would come out and do the work. We had all the work established this spring to start and finish by May. And there were, they'd come, they'd go, they'd leave stuff. They actually got part of Judge Jones's counter up there and everything. So right now, TAC's been working with and we've actually received a scheduled back run that's gonna come through and once again, they'll make an offer that they will come in and do the work at their leisure, not at ours. The schedule that was presented to us, right now, Judge Fowler's very up top. I've totally rejected all the work they've done. It was poor quality work. They've been notified, come back and corrected, and we have not seen them. So even if that was done in the third floor courtroom, they're looking to come back July fifth. Take two to two and a half weeks to do it. If they complete that, and that's if the court there would allow them to come and work. It's hard for them just to shut down the court that long because we already had the schedule. The commissioners, this, y'all's bench right there is the one that we lack right here. They're looking at four weeks starting in at the end of July. The second floor being the largest, they're looking possibly start in August or September. You know, taking six weeks to do, so. From one of the previous court meetings, I had asked her what she wanted to do. I went to a local contractor here. The original projected cost that we put with this warranty claim was slightly over forty thousand dollars. The cost that has come in right now from a local contractor was around forty-six thousand to come in and just do the work, get it over with, and then let y'all run the county attorney's office worrying about what to do with restaurants.
Which comes on my continuing to use this.
This letter's about four years, two, three, or whatever. This is really nice letter, but it's a long time. Really late. I get a little tired with this kind of stuff. We apologize as well. And anybody from the company here that were invited? Everybody?
Would you come?
So moving forward, we might look at, again, light good.
I just got a question on the local estimate.
Yes.
Consider duration for number one, number two, number three, number four. Twenty days, twenty days, ten days, ten days. Is that for each of those projects? Twenty days on commissioners' court. We work.
Yes, and what we would do in the commissioners' court, we'd agree to do this with the restaurant offices. Originally, they would come in and take that. We've required them now to provide a temporary one for y'all just to sit at because it'd at least be one of your court meetings to come in and do their work. We originally had this planned when y'all held your court over in the Santa Fe building and it was all supposed to be completed when you came back.
Are we going with them?
Yes.
So are you, I want to make sure I'm following what you're presenting, Mike. You're presenting the timeline that the company is saying that they can come into or Palmer Penny and us paying the forty-six thousand to do it?
Both, yes. The cost there, the forty-six, five, sixty, that's with Palmer Penny coming in with their woodwork and then millwork guys. And then now you've got Rest Your House. I'll send Palmer County a letter. We can do it.
Why don't they just send us a check?
It's about what it is.
Realistically, just going in, accepting, building, and spending in response to the legal project and then actually, we also use the house.
But I would imagine our, our legal footing changes significantly if they're offering a timeline and we're rejecting that timeline in this, in this year to protect this budget.
But every timeline.
Yeah, I would not, I would not disagree with that at all. Yeah, I'm not, I'm just trying to think about it a little bit from both angles. I would imagine if they're presenting to us, I'll leave that to you, Ted. It's about to discern. If they're presenting an option that is a foreseeable future, that may shift our footing if we decide to do it on our own and then file suit.
This letter doesn't really do anything to us, but what it really does is confess that they definitely were supposed to do. So the options are to proceed with the work through Palmer Penny and then file suit on this. And that may or may not result in a recovery, but I really thought someone from this outfit would be here this morning.
This is the first time I've seen anything documented in a timeline and maybe I'm just optimistic and the glass is half full, but they're not kicking the can down the road to say December. I mean, this looks to me around September-ish, but I don't want to speak for them. I feel everybody's pain on this court.
You're talking about the work that they did was not completed properly either.
In my company, tons of we use Palmer Penny in other years.
Quite a few. They actually did the flood project and everything. And they actually have a contract with Palmer County to do this type of work.
Where did this money come from, the forty-six five for Palmer Penny? If you say contingent.
Let me take that on the mill and repair account and if I run short, then I'll come back to y'all. See if y'all can help me. This was one. I'm sorry.
I just want to let Palmer Penny do the work.
Is that a motion?
I'm, I'm with that.
Could you say where the money's gonna come from though?
The money will come from the mine.
Can you go ahead and make that motion, Mike? Can y'all?
I do.
No, I'm in here. Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we, that we, on faith, on peace, to do the work and that we, our, our legal staff to follow us.
And that's that we, uh, need our, our legal staff to follow suit. The money will come from Mike's.
Okay, and a second.
It's church owners, very similar.
Oh, okay, good. I'm in here, okay. I have a motion and a second. On the favor, raise your hand. All right, number fourteen, inmates services to consider and act upon the provision delivered sixty day notice to the United States Department of Health Centers regarding its contract for completion of male health services for five counties, which is sent to inmates. Chief.
Are you praising the letter?
It's odd that we were determining this.
I mean, yeah, okay, Steve, what do you want to say? And I, but I'll tell you what I know.
Okay. About five years ago, we started legating money to pay psychiatrists to see inmates that were not TPC plants. In other words, this is to help, you know, to help basically get medication started for inmates, you know, facility. That are not being seen by TPC, because TPC will see them and then provide medication. Somehow, we got this contract where we started getting charged by TPC, basically the, the psychiatrists would see the TPC plant. And that psychiatrist would bill TPC, and TPC would bill us. And we would pay it out with that money that was really to go to inmates that were not TPC plants. So we've been doing that for two or three years. About two or three years. And again, it just, I'm very attention that really this money needs to go to inmates that are not being helped, you know, another way. I called Randall County, TPC's not charging them for, for the psychiatrist, you know, evaluation, so. We just didn't think that our county should be charged, you know, additionally for that psychiatric, you know, psychiatric services. So we felt like we would, in this contract, it's not saying we're not skilled in what you would see and, yeah. So it's just, we're moving this contract to say that we're gonna pay for their clients to see psychiatry, you know, the psychiatrists.
So it sounds like a bit of a county kind of error, if you was what I meant to be seeing. Well, are they going to refund at all? Has anyone had that dialogue with TPC?
They're probably not gonna refund when the court gets spent.
Okay, and we've confirmed that with their leadership?
Uh, we wanted to get rid of this, this contract here. We wanted to, to get this, you know, avoid, basically, you know, how it works here. And then we would like to talk with, with TPC.
We signed the contract, so we got ourselves got into.
Well, but I, um, I think it specifies non-TPC inmates all, all in the cursory.
It doesn't actually say that. That was clearly the intent.
Okay.
But no, it doesn't actually say that. And so it's kind of disagreements.
Okay. I talked with Butcher on Thursday, and he is out of town. He wants to meet with us quickly to get this resolved, and I have pretty good, feel pretty good about getting it resolved. I think we can do this. And that's, I'm not saying we're gonna go back to the contract with him, but I think he's got a really good explanation. I don't know if we can get together.
And, and TPC also, Randall County has three employees, uh, TPC employees. Uh, we used to have a TPC employee that was at our facility, and she's sitting over there now. She works for us. Ray, who's doing the, you know, programs, the anger management, some of that stuff that we've, we use commissaries to pay for. And, uh, they've never replaced her since January.
So Randall has three positions and we have zero.
Right.
And we have, um, the largest share of mental health patients. It's, we, interest.
So now that there's a, there's a, I mean, it's kind of complex, because they're saying that they have a grant that paid for some of that. I'm not sure.
There, there is, and there's an explanation for it. I just don't want to make it public.
Okay.
And I'll.
There's something we need to pass.
Not on the head, it's, we had, it's gonna take a while, but I think we can resolve it.
And we just want to get, like I said, send the numbers to, you want me to send, you have the contract.
And in that sixty days, we may can get this fixed, but if not, we'll go in, the sixty days, we can go and sign on that today or go on that today.
Ted, do you think, do you have any issue with this, us, uh, checking?
I, I agree with that course of action. With follow-up discussions, if we decided we wanted another contract, we would want clarity.
I have worked with Butcher over twenty-five years. He was a very, very good man, and I, I just, I had to just cut him off. It's like, we're done with you without an explanation from him or a chance for him to explain it, so. We're gonna get together. It's the sheriff on town this week.
I think he'll pay thirty, something.
He wanted to talk with us as soon as he could, so we'll get that set up. Okay? Is that good?
Am I gonna go ahead?
Yes.
I move that we approve the proposal to deliver a sixty day notice in Terre Haute, Texas, Panhandle Centers regarding this contract for provision of male service for five counties.
Second. I have a motion and a second on favor. Raise your hand.
Judge, when you visit, I actually would expect them to refund. I'm just thinking about the later money is allocated at the state level grant. And I feel like our payment might be a duplication, um, because they often count, they count the number of inmates, that there's statistics that go with that. So can you count? Um, and if it's not coming right, I feel like that's a duplication. I've worked with a lot of nonprofit boards, so I would expect some money back presently.
All right, number fifteen, formal bid number one one four six dash one seven, consider and act upon the warning formal bid. One one four six dash one seven, the detention center laundry supplies, who may afford that brand new as the most responsible.
Um, I just want to make a recommendation to Martin Bayfield. This is one that, uh, Matt Johnson's here, he's the buyer on it, that we have to do every. Matt, it's a three-year contract, right?
Yes.
It's a three-year contract. It was up from the middle of this year.
It's Mayfield, our current, yes, supplier.
And no issues, customer service, affiliate?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I move to reject the formal bid number eleven forty-six dash seventeen. With detention center laundry supplies. Mayfield Paper Company is the most responsible.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you. Number sixteen, emergency equipment replacement to consider and act upon replacing life pack fifteen. A big letter for the detention center, amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars in break. Since from Sterlington Medical, letting it be determined. It's kind of something unique, um. Come on back.
Yes, I'm right back. Medical supervisor, to explain kind of what the function, functionality is of that machine. Uh, I guess it's been probably five years ago was when we purchased a refurbished one. And, uh, it's gone. So, well, we, we just purchased it five, I would think it's about five years, maybe it's six or so. But, uh, it was refurbished and sort of worked for, for that long. And, uh, it's pretty much outdated too. Mary, would you want to? The functionality of this machine, like I said, is to tell whether or not to put it on, you make this happen. Problem, whether or not to send it to the hospital or. Go ahead, that one's bad for.
Um, we have AEDs, but this is, uh, to allow our medical staff to do several different things. It contains twelve leaky EKGs, which can triage to help keep the cost down, to send inmates out to the hospital, plus a security issue. Um, also, with today's inmates that are coming in, we have several that are on a substance that is unknown. So also, we need the capability to determine if there are things going on with their heart. Whether it be a rapid heart rate or a leaky arrhythmia. This machine allows the paramedics and nurses on duty to override and use their knowledge. Like an AED is for someone that's not medically trained. This has the capability to print out twelve leaky EKGs. It, we can override the jewels that we shock somebody with if they're only in atrial fibrillation. And you could convert them if they're having shortness of breath. Things of that nature until the ambulance does get there. Of course, we call the ambulance first, but it is a, it could be a liability issue for us not to have this equipment.
I'm just surprised this didn't have a very budget cycle. Again, kind of the end of life scenario we had on the technology switches. These are the things that get us during the year, so I was surprised.
If we have items that are still working. We're gonna let them still work, so they're not really.
Oh, it, it broke?
Yeah, it just broke.
It's the way we purchased it from what I understand, approximately eight years ago. It was refurbished.
I guess, I guess what you might be, is the life cycle have a specific number of years when you procure it, when it's refurbished or brand new. And that's a part of life cycle, and, and where, where we at.
Or something like this, you, if the life cycle depend on how many times you use it.
Well, I don't know. I don't think it's that. I think it's just, I mean. I couldn't get solved, but, but if it's still functioning, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're, uh, we're gonna practice use things to the.
Yeah, we, we have, um, exchange batteries. We have exchange leads. Um, we've done a couple of different things to avoid having to buy a brand new. But I think in the best interest of the medical department at the jail is to buy a brand new, buy state of the art, which will last, last longer and will, it'll just help our department.
Any research on the company, so?
Um, the life pack is currently one B AMS, um, all over Amarillo. They carry their trucks. And it's state of the art, and they use it in ERs. Very comparable to what, uh, your emergency department uses.
Judge, is there ever any, um, dialogue with, um, I think of Northwest in particular, know they're on our top ten taxpayer list, and, uh, and that's where our inmates go. It would be interesting to know if there's ever a business relationship, so as they have, um, material or, or items of this nature that they don't use, uh, they have a, an attrition schedule. I used to work at Northwest, so there is an attrition schedule. It doesn't matter how many times you use it. It knows however many years, and it follows that life cycle. So that obviously, so their state of the art equipment always at the hospital. Be interesting to know if there's ever a business dialogue, kind of like how we got the, uh, the desk, right? We don't often think about medical equipment out there, but it's very costly, I think, to stay up to speed, so it would be interesting to know. That might ever be in conversation. The CEO has attended a few of our things at Hunter.
Interesting if you're gonna get, get their used equipment.
Yeah, I mean, what with our used equipment is, is, you know, you really probably not that old compared to how we relate.
That sound, that sound like a conversation with a crew plan, a strategic plan, a decision to be doing, so.
It just might be a, I'm not saying that addresses this immediately, but.
And, and I think the problem that we're having right now is a lot of our equipment is starting to go out of date. Our stretchers are continuing to break down, which we're fixing to put into the budget to obtain. This is the problem that we buy refurbished equipment, and I do believe it'd be a benefit just to buy new, have the warranty, and avoid, you know, this problem in a couple of years from now.
Would be interested to know what your grocery list is, right? Or the things that you, you think you at least introduce it to them.
I, yeah.
Have you had dialogue? Might be worth it.
I move to, uh, approve the purchase of life.
Where's the money coming from? It was actually on the budget. That was the transfer. Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
I'll go ahead.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Number seventeen, formal items to consider and act upon following only road bridge first. Employment of Trey Brown is Senator Moore headed to June fourteenth, February seventeenth, the resignation of Trey Brown.
And it's gonna be Troy.
Trey.
Troy.
Trey. It's Troy. I'm so sorry. Shannon. I know. It's okay. I apologize. This one is a Troy Brown, Senator Moore, effective June fourteenth, resignation of Troy Brown, smaller, effective June fifteenth, he really did my job. Uh, employment of Dexter Beach is made this take as a request from Mark Schumer, effective June fifteenth, resignation of Pedro Aradondo, Senator Moore. Let's make a motion, you do those first.
I move we approve the formal items for the road bridge. Second.
I have a motion, second on favor, raise your hand. About zero. Facility statements to the employment of Pedro Aradondo as assistant groundkeeper. As request for Nick Lethers, effective July first. Employment of James William Haskins, its maintenance, take one, as request for Jason Marlin, effective July first, twenty-seventeenth.
We can, we can provide for the service. Sorry.
Motion and second on favor, raise your hand. Attorney for today is five hundred and twenty-three one deal, seventy-nine of those are females, nine of them are minors, eighty-one percent are felons, nine percent are lesbians. We're gonna be in county insurance items.
Yes, we have life and the health image, just a convenient one.
Which one was that? Wait for me.
Uh, Sheriff's Office.
Okay, second session, we don't have one. Jenna Allen, we see Jenna Allen's for next time.
Uh, the only question, Carrie, I had a mental note about, I know I'm not very knowledgeable, I think, uh, the unused capital credits. I just didn't know if we ever have a dollar.
Okay, okay. Once we have a dollar, we'll just, we'll get time to think about it, but.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to, just for information purposes. Many of you received emails in regards to, uh, issue of the little creek, road, speeding from the gentleman. And I'd like to just, uh, inform before anyone else who received this, say what, what really is, is going on. We started hearing from this gentleman probably in default. He's a recent discharge from military, moved here from, uh, the Fort Hood area. And, uh, he has, uh, I guess the only thing he has to do is sit out and watch traffic go by. But, uh, this is, uh, the sheriff has addressed this issue. They've gone out to the, uh, home, spoke with the gentleman. They've set up, uh, not only speed traders at this location, they've set and watched traffic for a full twenty-four hour period. They've done everything that financially possible to do. If we did this for every citizen that had complained about speeding in, in the county, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything with our sheriff's department. Um, I have been in communication with this gentleman over the, those months. The last communication I had with him was probably two weeks or so before this email that came out happened. Some of the things he said are untrue. And so before, well, let me say that the only negative things I've ever said to this gentleman was number one, I didn't believe that we should ever put up a speed bump on Main Arterial Road like low grade. And that wasn't the answer he wanted. And so he got kind of snarky, and I told him, well, I really will not respond to you again because, uh, I think you ought to spend your time on something positive. But those were the only, uh, only negative things that were ever, ever said to the gentleman. Um, so he has also followed our deputies to, uh, to their eating places, complained that there's two of them together. Well, in this day and age, I think that's a wise decision to be two of them together if they're out of their squad cars. So I, I think before we start sending things around, we need to check what the truth is in, in the, really check with who's been involved. I just wanted to clear that up, because I think there's some misinformation.
Sheriff, he talked to me about this also, to the speed thing they put, they put about their, the, your, uh, a basher going.
how fast you were going was, the average speed was like forty-seven. So this guy is saying that everyone's going seventy-five to eighty, so it's just not true.
And there, there probably, there may have been some that go through there, you know, that fast or whatever, but, you know, obviously, if we're not sitting there at the time that they're doing that, and we, we can't sit there twenty-four or seventy. So obviously, if we're not there, we can't. Uh, we've even had where he's given description of the vehicle, we went and found the vehicle where it's, you know, goes back to. And in fact, uh, Lieutenant Sembora just did this, I think it was last week. Uh, went up, knocked on the door, and the vehicle belonged to, uh, older gentleman, and he said that his grandson was driving the vehicle, and he ensured that, uh, his grandson would not be driving, you know, fast again. But again, like I said, there, you know, there probably is, you know, some, you know, traffic laws in there, but you can't sit there. Just like on I forty, you know, you have motorcycle officers out there, traffic slows down when motorcycles are there, they speed up when they're not there, so, you know.
I think another important thing is, I have attended several of the homeowner association meetings, not once, is anyone else ever saying anything about the issue. So it's a personal thing. We've had people within the county, we've had blocked their emails because they're harassing. I think, um, this is a bit of harassment.
Commissioner, um, and I, I may have been the one that accidentally caused heartburn. This is what I typically do, so I would be interested to know what we should be doing. Um, anytime I receive a complaint of any kind, I, I forward it to the appropriate department. I, by default, always include Scott and our judge. So I think in that scenario, I did get an email, and I sent it to the sheriff and judge, yeah, because I know that it's probably already been vetted. Um, that's just typically what I do. So if I did something incorrectly, I want to publicly apologize for that if that was the case. Uh, but I don't know if there's anything different we should be doing as protocol, because, you know, we often do get complaints. That's, uh, very rare that we get a call that says good job, right? We get the complaints. So there's one thing, anybody else does different, but if, if I caused any heartburn, I'm going to publicly apologize for that.
Yeah, I think it was like your last season, he has PT today, has some issues.
He's gone overboard, uh, uh, obviously. He just, he's got some problems. I delete, that's what I do.
Kevin called me about it, he's come to the, to the county, and, uh, you know, to see what all the sheriff's office does and all that. Wanted to go, and then after this last meeting, I'm not going.
Okay. Is there anything else? Nothing else, we are done. Thank you very much.